Okay, let's call the meeting of the Grand Prairie Planning Commission to order. It's October 5th, 2016. Show that the commissioners Hal Greenwood and Todd Miller are not present. You have an agenda in front of you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Otherwise, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Aye, so move.
Uh, second.
Motion is made and seconded to accept the agenda as presented. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes, this agenda is accepted. First item is the minutes of the previous meeting on September 7th. Corrections, changes?
Yeah.
I think it's pretty accurate representation of the meeting and the outcome.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to accept it. Aye, minutes.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Minutes are approved. Okay, our last meeting, we were talking about nonconforming uses in relationship to the language of our ordinance. And we went through some different community ordinances that had language that we asked Mike to come back with after we kind of gave him some direction. So here we have in front of us, a language that Mike has prepared regarding nonconformities and how this might be incorporated into our ordinance to clarify the language that we currently have. Mike, I don't know, you want to just explain?
Sure.
What we have in front of us and answer any questions if anybody has any?
It's, you see the two pages that include subdivisions one through six. It would be the intent to come to a future meeting, hold a public hearing with an actual ordinance that would modify our existing zoning ordinance by removing the, all of the current 1916 and replacing it with this. So start with that. One thing that is included in our existing nonconformities that won't be replaced in this language is the first section that talks about nonconforming junkyards. I guess I just thought that perhaps that wasn't necessary anymore and so we wouldn't miss it because I'm not sure we have any. This language you'll probably find familiar because most of it comes from the four examples that we looked at last month. And as a matter of fact, you've probably noticed that there were a lot of similarities between some of those cities and the way that they handled this issue. So, the purpose and intent, we don't have one in our existing nonconformity section and I think this is helpful. If we do have any questions about nonconformities and we're not sure what something means, it's good to then look back to the purpose and intent to help interpret it, you know, whatever the language says. And this again is actually fairly standard stuff. You'll notice that this says that we are encouraging nonconformities brought into compliance and reasonable to do so. Now, that's not necessarily the way that we've acted in the past. So, that's potentially a policy change from how things have happened. But, we're not actively trying to discourage or discontinue nonconforming uses. We're recognizing that they have a right to exist, legal ones anyway, and that as long as they comply with this ordinance, they can continue to do so. We're also talking about diminishing impacts and I think that's another issue. The whole concept of nonconformities is really, I think, designed to talk about impacts on nonconformities. And so in this case, we want to make sure we remember that we want to think about the impacts when we're looking at any issues to deal with nonconformities. Section two, continuation rights, this is statutory stuff. We're just recognizing it. Subdivision three, then the termination of those rights. We're saying this is when your legal nonconforming status is removed. That you can't resume when you discontinue for a period of more than one year. That's actually in our ordinance now and it's a common ordinance inclusion. You make an increase of usable floor area in a building or, and again, this next one is also statutory. The building is destroyed by fire by more than 50% of its market value. No permits been applied for within 180 days. Subdivision four, expansion. We're now being clear about this whereas before I think we were very ambiguous about it. We're saying that you cannot expand a nonconforming use. And we're defining what we mean by expansion with those four different points. And then we're also saying here's when they can be expanded. They can be expanded if there's a conditional use allowed in that zone to expand a nonconforming use. And we don't have any of those right now. Or it's, if it's changed to a conforming use. So, those are the, really the only situations. If somebody came in and said, "I want to add onto my building and it's not conforming," we would tell them no unless they were making it conforming. Subdivision five, substitution. There's three different stabs at this one. And this is really trying to get at the questions that came up when you looked at the rezoning request at your last month's meeting.
Yeah.
Inside of a building or in the interior of a property or site. Just what does it mean when the uses shift back and forth? It was my opinion that the language that we currently have says that if you change from commercial to residential in a residential zone, that you can't go back. So, this language, I think generally agrees with what our current language says, but it also gives kind of three different levels of review. So the first one is they can be substituted for another similar nonconforming use when they both fall into the same category of uses defined in the zoning ordinance. So for instance, if you had one retail use, you could put other retail uses in there without any question about whether that's a change that would remove your nonconforming status. Or if you put one service use, you could put other service uses in there. Those are existing definitions in our zoning ordinance. Those definitions may change over time. In the future, we may have a different set of definitions that this would then refer to. That's one option. I think it's fairly easy to use, but it still leaves a lot of room for disagreement about things. Option two, this is trying to be a little more specific and maybe pointing out more than anything how difficult it is to deal with this issue with specific ordinance language. So when a structure contains a mix of conforming and nonconforming uses, at the time the nonconformity is established, substitution of conforming uses for nonconforming uses shall not constitute an expansion where the resulting use does not create any new adverse impacts on adjacent property. It matches exactly the conditions that existed before the substitution, including structural dimensions such as height, width, usable floor area. We're trying to, that's a mouthful.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. What we're trying to do here is again, harken back to the concept of impacts. That if we don't really change the way anyone perceives the property, do we really care about what's happening inside of it? And so if there are no adverse impacts...
Although I'd say, you know, on that point, I mean, if we're getting back to the beginning when we were talking about are we encouraging people to become conforming or not?
Yeah.
I think if we are encouraging them to be conforming, then we should have it be that, you know, if you change something within the structure to be more conforming, that that's kind of where it stops. That it doesn't go back.
And that, yeah, that's true. That's a potential conflict in our purpose statement in this section here. That the adverse or the other side of that argument is that this opening clause is so specific that there really aren't very many. There are a couple though, that we know about.
Right.
That are mixed use and were that way at the time the nonconformity was established. And so I think this is maybe trying to deal with two specific situations. But, it's also trying to deal with when it comes from time to time. Option three requires a little more process. It would say you can substitute similar nonconforming uses if granted a conditional use permit. What I like about this is we have a review process, first of all, so we can think about what the impacts are. We can make conditions about what the impacts can be. And we also say you have to do these four things. So people have a real clear set of guidelines about when they ask us for permission to do something, they know what they have to meet in order to make, you know, in order to be granted that conditional use permit. The other nice thing about it is when someone's granted a conditional use permit, it creates a permanent recorded document. So there's now new rules that have been established for that property that are written down, that everybody gets to see, that everybody asks to play by. So they don't have to keep coming back as long as they continue to comply with those rules. You could potentially have a conditional use permit for a property that said you can have, you know, any combination of service and retail on the main floor as long as, you know, whatever conditions might be. Something like that where you set the rules up front based on these specific circumstances of the property, based on the review of these requirements and then you can move forward. Then subdivision six, this is something that was included in some of the ordinances from other cities.
Yeah.
I'm not exactly sure how we would apply it here, but I liked the thought about it anyway. So it's this idea that we may impose upon a nonconformity reasonable regulations to prevent nuisances, protect public health, safety or welfare. This is really getting back to the purpose statement of the entire zoning ordinance. That's why we have zoning to do these things. And so we're saying, okay, there might be a nonconformity. They're not complying with their zoning ordinance, but we still have the ability to deal with public safety, health and welfare. I'm hoping that there are questions.
Are there questions? And maybe before we start, Tina, could you go and make copies so that the people in the audience have the language?
Just in this last page?
Just that one page, just that page that we're talking about.
Too big.
It's too big.
Yeah.
Do we have a couple extra agendas? I thought we had a couple extra agendas.
They disappeared.
Popul.
So you get to see what we're talking about. I think that'd be reasonable. Well, let's go back to subdivision one and talk about the purpose and intent.
I think it's pretty solid in terms of what it's suggesting. I'm not sure that there's a need to make any changes to this subdivision. If anybody else has any comments or thoughts on that? What we're trying to do is replace the language that's in the current ordinance, which is 1971 language with more modern and, I think, concise language that will help us deal with the issues of nonconformities as we go forward.
Yeah, I felt like definitely this first section seemed fine.
Any other comments on the first section, purpose and intent?
Well, the second subdivision, continuation rights, this is statutory language. I think it's good to put in there just because it gives us reference to the state statute regarding legal nonconformities and what our responsibilities are. We're not going to change state statutes, so it's either a question of we include it or don't include it. We're still governed by it and regulated by it. So I think it's...
I like having it there just for other people's reference as well. You know, like it's not just us.
I agree.
So then subdivision three, the termination of rights. Where it says a legal nonconforming use must not resume where, you know, we have three provisions to that. Any comments, thoughts, questions?
On number one, I'm just a little confused on the one-year one. We had that discussion the last meeting. And I'm not clear of what you're thinking here, what you...
Well, I think that was in the, our...
It is in our existing language.
It's in our existing.
It may very well be statutory as well. It's certainly common. Something you see in city zoning ordinances to talk about nonconformities. This concept of if you discontinue that use for a year, then you no longer have the rights to it.
Okay.
In that section one, you know, I was asking Mike earlier about this where it says there should be a showing of intent to abandon the use or premises. And I'm questioning whether or not abandon is the right choice of words. It seems to me we need to look at it from a different perspective is that there should be an intent to show that they want to continue that use because I think it would be harder for us to show that they would want to abandon the use. But if, in the case of a space that was being offered for lease or available in some means, there certainly would be an intent on the owner's part to continue that use. Where abandoning the use...
So you'd rather see it the flip?
Well, I'm not sure that anybody's going to come out and make any kind of positive statement to the effect that, "Yeah, I'm terminating this or I'm going to let it go and not going to..."
But they clearly have not that.
Re-estate that...
So I did think of one possible way that that overt act language gets put in there. Someone has a nonconforming use, they apply for a building permit that says they're changing it to a conforming use. And then eight months later come back and try to reestablish the nonconforming use in the new structure because it's been less than 12 months. But there's this overt act in the meantime where they applied for a permit that says they were going to change their mind. Even saying that, I kind of like the way Tim's suggesting it better than the way it's written here. The burden being on the property owner to demonstrate that they've been attempting to continue the use. Which if they have been, shouldn't be a burden at all. It should be very simple. Whereas, asking us to try and come up with some kind of overt act of abandonment would be pretty ridiculous probably.
And even your example, if they came back, if they had applied for a permit to do something else and chose not to follow through on that, if it was within that one-year period, they would still have the right to continue that nonconforming use as it was because they didn't discontinue it for that one-year period.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I just think to look at it from the continuation side rather than the abandonment side makes it probably a little bit easier for us to administer so that, and it would put the burden again, as Mike said, on the owner to show that they're continuing, trying to continue that use.
So it takes the abandonment out of that sentence then?
Which...
Is what we...
Well...
Which change abandoned to continue. So, the reading would show, there'd be a showing of intent to continue the use or premises.
Right.
Yeah, it'll require a little changing of other stuff in there, but the concept is...
Changing other stuff where, like within number one or...
Instead of there shall be a showing, it'll have to be something, something that will have to be added somewhere.
Yeah.
And then in paragraph three, again, that's statutory language that allows nonconforming uses which are destroyed by fire to be allowed to rebuild if they do that within that 180-day period.
That seems fair.
Well, that's, you know, within the last 10 years that that change was made statutorily and this idea that you get 180 days to apply for a conditional use permit. Our current zoning ordinance has this language in it, except for the concept of what 50% means. And I don't think that's statutory. I think we're specifying it here that 50% of its value means the actual value is assessed by the county. So, it's just so that we know what, you know, we're talking about. I don't believe we've actually had any of these come up in the 45 years of this ordinance, so...
Never happened in the city. This has come into play in the county with fires of the trail or buildings were burned down that, you know, wanted to rebuild and they may have been at substandard setbacks and may have been closer to property lines or some such thing. They were allowed to rebuild under this provision.
And this is a very common question I get from realtors or potential purchasers of property when they were buying properties that are nonconforming, a single-family nonconforming home, for instance. Because the mortgage company wants to know. If we're going to borrow money based on this, can they rebuild it? Insurance company wants to know. So that sort of thing.
And then that last paragraph, subdivision three. I had a question about that with, where it says that where any right to continue the nonconformity is terminated, any future use of land must comply fully with the city code and zoning ordinance. And I think specifically in the case of the nonconformities that we've identified, I think every one of them probably doesn't comply with all the terms and regulations of the ordinance in terms of lot sizes, setbacks, things like that. That we just want some clarification that that wasn't, wouldn't jeopardize the ability to continue the use of that building.
Right.
Even if it was in a conforming state.
Yeah.
Because of zoning requirements.
Some of the ordinances split up the concept of use from lot dimensions and site characteristics and other things. We've generally talked about this, certainly in the more recent history, as use, a concept about nonconforming uses.
Yeah.
But it's actually much more common for us to deal with nonconformities as lot dimensions or setbacks. Those are the ones that are the most common. There's a significant amount of nonconforming residential structures in the city right now. So, you know, maybe this statement even should just go away and we don't have to worry about thinking about what it means. It's kind of redundant anyway.
Yeah, because obviously we're moving them into conformity if it's, if the nonconformity is terminated. Obviously, they're conforming enough.
Yeah.
I would be fine with taking it out of there and not have to deal with that bit of ambiguity.
But can I just clarify? So for instance, if, say like Spry's building or whatever, went and became fully conforming in some way, you're saying like it could be problematic because maybe the lot size isn't large enough or something like that will come up? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying, yeah, that they changed it all to residential use.
Yeah, okay.
And yet, if they wanted to make then an adjustment to the building and they came and asked for a variance for that, this statement may preclude us from granting them a variance to expand the garage or something like that because it doesn't comply. It's just not clear. You know, you could make the argument that, well, getting a variance actually is in compliance with our city code and, because it's allowed in our city code. But maybe it just adds confusion where we don't need to.
Okay.
I think it creates probably a little bit more of a cloud on those properties that might be a conforming use but might be on substandard lots or have reduced setbacks. Should something happen to that property or that structure, the use would still be allowed on that property, but conformity with the ordinance might not be possible in terms of the setbacks or lot size requirements. In which case, in order to rebuild, would require a variance or some other action. So can we agree then to take that out?
Yeah.
Subdivision four, expansion. Nonconformities may not be expanded unless expressly permitted as discussed below. For purposes of this section, expansion of a nonconformity shall include, one, an increase in structure dimensions, size, area, height, width, number of units, usable floor area and/or land use, land area of use. I agree with all of those except the number of units because I think that that, again, is kind of an ambiguous term. I think especially when we look at the nonconforming uses that we have currently identified. You know, we talked about the Spry building at the last meeting where there's multiple office spaces in that, in the lower level or the main floor that I'm not sure if we define them as units. But should they want to change their number of tenants in there from whatever they might have to a different number, it's still using the space for the same type of use. The question then gets to be, are we really concerned about the number of units or are we concerned about the use that's going on? If the use stays the same, I mean, say somebody wanted to take over the whole lower level and turn it to their primary office and one unit. Does it make sense to try to regulate it based on units or is... I mean, we already talked about usable floor area.
We don't actually consistently define the term units in the zoning ordinance either. We define a dwelling unit for residential purposes and we define a unit when it comes to lodging. And it's kind of the same idea. It doesn't matter how many rooms. It's a separate independent operating and it says it has to have, you know, a kitchen and a bedroom or something like that. I couldn't tell you how many units there are in the Spry building right now. I have no idea. And I'm sure it's changed over time and I've not known before. And I doubt the neighbors have either.
I think, I think over time that building has been remodeled to accommodate the tenants that, you know, are using it. And whether it's one tenant creating three separate offices or multiple tenants, I mean, it's not something that we've ever been concerned about other than to know that it's been continued to be used as an office space.
And I kind of get that. I guess what I'm thinking about though, as I read that and kind of thinking maybe we should leave it in and I recognize it's not well-defined, is the idea of, well, what if we're, if we are intending for people to come into conformity, if we take your example and say, you know, it's residential, you know, they take, you know, they take two of those offices out and now those are residential. I mean, we would kind of want that to maintain.
Well, that would be, that would be a whole different thing if they brought part of that lower level into a residential status.
Yeah.
You would take it out of the nonconforming use status.
Right.
In which case, then they relinquish their rights to continue that nonconforming use.
Okay.
So, I think that that, I mean, as the uses change over time to come into compliance or come into conformity, then then the right, those future rights have ceased.
Okay.
So...
I'd like to see the number of units stay in there.
And how would, how would you use that to further kind of our intent here?
The nonconformity may be not, may be expanded. So, if you have five units in a building, if you take out one of those, do you go into conformity? Or not stay in nonconformity?
Well, my thought is that, say you had 1,000 square feet of office space that was divided into five separate offices or units. If somebody wanted to lease multiple spaces and now they call it three units because they're leasing multiple spaces and you still have 1,000 feet of office space. The only thing that's changed is your reference to number of units, which...
I get it.
Doesn't have any relationship to, you know, the level of nonconformity.
Right. And so what you're saying is what I'm concerned about is being addressed by simply saying usable floor area.
Right. Yeah, so they couldn't expand the usable floor area to be greater than whatever the usable floor area that, you know, currently exists at.
I think what you're saying is also taken care of by subdivision three. It's the concept of termination of rights again. I think what you're saying is also taken care of by subdivision three, it's the concept of termination of rights again. And if some.
Oh, yeah.
Commercial area was being used in a conforming way for twelve months.
Right.
Then it's now lost its.
Right.
Conforming status.
Okay.
Alright, I can see that.
And I believe that is consistent with our existing language.
So can we agree to remove number of units from just kind of this laundry list of?
Yeah, so I think we're addressing it otherwise.
I think we do too, I think we we just. Remove that that level of question about what's a unit and. We still have the total square square feet or usable floor area reference. So the other the second. Portion of that is the addition of a structure part there.
That seems.
That's pretty straightforward, I think, yeah. Addition of equipment. And I suppose this would have to do with some kind of mechanical system or something or other here exchange or.
I mean, this is straight borrowed from other peoples or other cities' language. I don't know how to conceptualize it here for you either.
Well, I thought it was good, at least, you know, somebody has got, I don't know, they've got some business that includes some machinery if they replace it with something similar. Seems like you'd want to allow that.
When we had that, when we did rent it, the building, the lower building, when I was with the Forest Service, we were. Through the road guys were crushing rocks and testing this and testing that and. Yes, new equipment comes along, you get it to use it, you know. Addition of equipment is probably discussing.
Yeah, I think it's talking about situations that occur in other cities in industrial zones.
Yeah.
That that when zoning is established, there are industrial uses outside of the industrial zones. And they don't want to limit their conversation to structures when somebody might bring something like a rock crusher onto a piece of property. They don't wanna make sure that that's clear as well. And like I said, I I have a harder time conceptualizing that for our own circumstances, but. I don't know if it does any harm to keep it in there.
Well, like if you had the, you know, you want a better oven in the bakery, you know, you can just replace that with a better one.
Yeah, it does add that clarity to the other side of the coin, which is, yeah, feel free and replace equipment with new. Improvement over previous methods.
Yeah.
Alright.
I'd like to keep that.
Okay, then then paragraph four then is states relocation of nonconforming use to a new location on the property not previously used unless the relocation reduces or eliminates the nonconformity.
Like that.
I think that's pretty clear language. Then the fol- the following paragraph, nonconformities may be expanded as follows. One, that nonconforming uses may expand upon issuance of a conditional use permit. Only when listed as a conditional use within the applicable zoning district.
So for instance, I live in the resort commercial neighborhood zone.
Yeah.
There are likely people renting there. That. Using things that are now listed as a conditional use that weren't before, so they're currently legal nonconforming. And yet, if they wanted to make improvements, we'd say, well, you can do that, but you actually have to come into conformance by getting a conditional use permit first.
Whereas originally, they never 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 asked for a conditional use permit nor received a conditional use permit just because they were grandfathered in because of the.
Got it.
Reexisting condition. Okay, then paragraph number two, nonconforming uses not listed as conditional use may only expand if changed to a conforming use. Sounds pretty.
Yeah, you get.
Pretty clear there.
It's probably the third time we've kind of said that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then subdivision five, and this is where we might suggest that we have some options and he presented us with three different options to. Use as language for substitution of uses within a nonconforming. Property. The first one. Said states that nonconforming uses may be substituted for another similar nonconforming use when both uses fall under the same category. Of uses defined in the current city zoning ordinance. I I mean, I think that's pretty good language. Just I did have some questions about. The interpretation of similar nonconforming uses and the term same category just because, you know, we don't define that and, you know. We don't wanna be ambiguous in our in our language to.
And we don't separate use categories as a section of definitions. I know which ones they are now, but maybe there's disagreement about that if you asked ten people which ones are use categories. The trick of if you list them here. Then anytime you make any changes to them, you have to remember to come back to this section and change this one as well. So I'd rather refer the list if if we could, but if that creates ambiguity, then maybe there's a better way to do this.
Yeah, and this is something similar that we did within the zoning ordinance, we used when it was the ordinance was originally created, it had a laundry list of. Long list of the types of uses that could be in a commercial district and everything from a bank to a bakery and but very specific, you know. And as we found, there were maybe deficiencies in that as new types of uses came along that weren't anticipated when the ordinance was written. We then changed the ordinance to reflect more broad categories, retail, service, you know, office, warehousing, things like that, you know.
Downtown went from seventy allowed uses to five. And the five is much more flexible or nimble as the city council was trying to say at their last meeting. Than the seventy ever was.
So when we're talking about same category, say we're talking about office uses at the Spry building. We recognize office uses, we don't have to call it an insurance office or a real estate office, you know, an office is an office and that's the category.
Yeah, and I think.
I think.
I'm not sure that this even really needs to be here, really, cuz I don't think that that's. Getting at the substitution I think we're really shooting for, I think we're looking at it more in the next section where we start talking about nonconforming. Uses going to conforming uses within. Building or structure.
Well, and I think this is the challenge is to make sure that we're what we're saying. Does reflect what we want to occur and, you know, these three. Different options. While they they they're similar, they're not the same and they don't necessarily reflect the same specific intent either, so.
Then what is what's good about number one is. It's something that people can rely on, they can read it, understand it and then just act rather than having to go through some extra process every time something changes in their building. So it provides some more clarity, but. It's a simple sentence too, so there is room for disagreements and a little ambiguity still.
I mean, I I like the idea of keeping it in in some way. If it's not otherwise addressed elsewhere, it just feels like, you know, an office is an office whether it's. A dental office or insurance, I mean, it's an office, you know, we don't really have to worry about it. But when we start talking about moving into conformity, nonconformity within. A building, that's where it seems like we we need to say more.
Yeah, I mean, I do like option one, I mean, other than it's 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 simplicity and potential for. Confusion as to what what those terms mean. I mean, I do think one of the things we want to make sure is that the owners of. Nonconforming properties recognize their right to continue that nonconformity. And in what scope can they continue that nonconformity within our ordinance and. This, I think, gets at that. I mean, I would hope we could clean up clean up that. Just the language so that it was would be. Much clearer to both, you know, anybody administering the ordinance or a building owner who might have. An intent to to continue a use or change a use in the future. Well, let's move on to option two. That states where a structure contains a mix of conforming and nonconforming uses at the time the nonconformity is established. Substitution of conforming uses for nonconforming uses shall not constitute an expansion. Where the resulting use does not create any new adverse impacts on adjacent property and matches exactly the conditions that existed before the substitution. Including structural dimensions such as height, width and usable floor area.
How'd you like to diagram that sentence?
Yeah.
Yeah, great linguist put that together, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not a fan of that sentence, but that that option. I mean, I might be a fan of that option, but I'm not a fan of that option in the form that it's that stated. If we're if we're trying to. Talk about. Existing uses where there's some conforming and some nonconforming uses within the same property. Which I'm not sure we 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 that really we really need to specifically talk about that cuz I think the rest of the ordinance provisions. Spell up spell out that if you have a conformity, you have a conformity, if you have a nonconformity, you have a nonconformity and these are the. Requirements or limitations to that nonconformity.
The the conversation that you had at your last meeting. Specifically about the inside of a mixed use building going back and forth between different levels of conformity and nonconformity is what we're trying to address here.
Right.
If if we don't address it and then it stands on. The concept of every time you have come into conformity, that piece of real estate, that section of floor can't go back. So. Which is what I think our current ordinance says. And short of including something like this, I believe this amendment would also say. So I'm just trying to allow for the planning commission to think about if they want that to be different because I thought at your last meeting that maybe you did. Want it to be different.
I don't recall.
Like it seemed like people were fairly comfortable with the idea of the second floor of the North Shore building being used for an insurance office. Maybe maybe I misread that, but that was my impression from your last.
I mean, I think we had that 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 conversation, but I think the the end result was that as things stood. And with the recommendation of the city attorney, that that isn't an option.
Right.
For the owners to convert that that space into something that would be. Nonconforming. So I I don't know that we need to. Include this language to accomplish that.
There's also a number of places in here where you would potentially have to make findings or a judgment call about a situation. Or collect evidence about something, about the impacts on the neighbors, about what use it is and and. It's not an easy thing to do, to have an ordinance to allow what you're talking about going back and forth. Without it being really very flexible and allowing a lot of things you probably didn't intend it to.
What I was thinking last time, last month was. We were fine with a realtor office, a vacation rental office up there. But not a vacation rental. Was that in the conversation?
And that was part of the just the zoning that it was, yes.
Right, no, we didn't feel that it was fair to the rest of the people that have asked for variances. And for us to give a building. The right to do. Be in a mixed unit. You know, we, yeah, we we want the money, we want the business, we want the employment. But for us to use one building. To me, it was. The picking and choosing, the way, well, we had the discussion about picking and choosing and. Much as we want them to be there, we don't want a vacation rental. Rental office, yes.
That's how I understood the conversation.
Yeah.
And given the fact that our ordinance doesn't allow that now.
Right.
That's why this is here, just to open the idea of if you you would need to change it, it would have to be something. Like this.
It's kind of hard to. Be in not be in a specific zone where you wanna do something. Like we had the discussions last year with vacation rentals up above and out west east and stuff. And then for us to change our mind for one building was my. My complaint. And if we, if you're helping us to. Make sure that something like that doesn't happen is what I want like you to do and I'm not sure. Which option helps us the most.
Right, I mean, maybe Mike, we should just hold here and move on to option three. Just I feel like that was something that. Might work as a way to make sure that the that we are moving people towards conformity. Within their structures and that we are. Trying to get them to go that way and not go back. So as they comply, they are complying and. You know, I get that we could think about them as just a nonconforming structure, you know, like this this building is just not conforming, whatever they do, it's not conforming. But I feel like, well, but if they start. Moving to conformity, then let's keep them moving in that direction, like there's ten units, seven of them are complying and then they add an eighth, let's make sure it stays there and not slides back.
So are you think you're thinking that option three?
It may allow for that more.
Provides better. I mean, it's it's a whole different.
Because I'm.
Process because now you're talking about a conditional use process that goes from the planning commission to the council and the council makes the ultimate decision. If it's just an administrative. Ruling that is spelled out very clearly what the allowances are.
Yeah.
That decision is made made by Mike or, you know, somebody in that capacity where. To me, the conditional use process. Leaves the door open a crack.
Okay.
Because. You never quite know what the outcome of that kind of process might be.
No, and I think that's absolutely true, that what we're trying to do here. Is not just our standard conditional use process. Where we don't necessarily have a list of conditions upfront, we have to generate it for each specific ask.
Okay.
But in this case, we're also adding some upfront conditions to it by s- but these, you know, one through four afterwards. It's not just any similar use, you also have to do these things and so it's trying to say, okay, we'll we'll allow flexibility in exchange for. Moving towards what we said our purpose and intent is. Having said that, I mean, Tim knows and I've certainly seen it too. Once you've created a a political, public conversation about it. It's not always as strongly about the ordinance anymore as it used to be. It's often much more about who shows up and says what.
So if 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 just the whole conversation about substitution, we're talking about. How do we wanna treat substituting? One use for another.
Yeah, and I guess that's where I feel like, you know, if it's if it's same, more or less same same, you know, like office to office, we don't care what they are. That to me is that all fine, where I feel like let's have some say is when within a structure, they start moving one direction or another direction.
Well. Well, I think where we're heading with at least the language that's in here now is that the substitutions would be pretty limited. I mean, there's not a broad range of substitutions, but it's a very defined class of substitutions that would be allowed based on, based on certain use. You know, the question is, does subdivision five get to that for us? If we, if we used option one, which is very simple language, does, is that, is that adequate to reflect our intent? Or do we need to do something, something more?
I think back to when the city council tried to deal with the playhouse and find some closure so people could move forward and know what the rules were about it. I don't know if option one rules were in place at that time, if we could have done what we did. Because there is a mix of different types of uses in the building and it's hard to understand. Okay, well, you're adding a retail space where it used to be something cultural. You know, those are two different categories in our ordinance. But there were retail and cultural uses in every four and now there are again, so do we care? Probably not, but does this language spell that out clearly? I don't know if it does yet. So it's still that mixed-use concept.
I think it's close, I think it's close, you know? At least the conversation of our intent of how we want it to be, which I, I think we understand, is that we want it to be of a similar category. So if it's retail to retail or office to office, service to service, but not service to retail or retail to office.
And actually, those things happen, I think. Those type of switches. And so then it gets down to, back to number three where you can say, okay, it's similar, not when it's the same category as defined in the ordinance, but when it creates the same adverse or no more adverse impacts on the neighborhood. And then it requires a process. Now, we don't necessarily have to add the conditional use permit process to it. We can say similar means that it doesn't create any more adverse impacts on the neighborhood. Or it doesn't create any difference in appearance. Or we can make a long list of what we say it means and define it very clearly, but still make it administrative. I think that would be a challenge. I, that's kinda one of the reasons why the conditional use process is helpful because there's so many unique circumstances that it's nice to be able to kinda take them one at a time. And the truth is, there's just not very many non-conforming uses in the city that we're gonna be dealing with this all the time.
Well, and we, we know that the non-conforming uses are unique to themselves. They're, they're not, you know?
Replicable.
Yeah, but, but one of the things I think that our intent here is to try to make your administration of this language much more clear so that if somebody comes to you with a question, you can respond with some level, level of certainty as to what the, what the requirements are or the level of certainty is not so clear with the existing ordinance and what do you think? I mean, I mean, is, are we heading in the right direction to provide the clarity that you need to, you know, make the decisions and respond to the, to the questions or, you know, you know, requests that might come before you?
Well, this is the last piece of the puzzle, this subdivision five, in my mind. The rest of it, I think speaks for itself very nicely. As a matter of fact, it's, it's really more about clarity for other people than for me. Like, they don't even have to come and ask me because it's clear right here. But I do also appreciate when it's clear and then I know what I'm saying is backed up in here. This, this concept of substitution though is still a little wishy-washy. I mean, it, it's worth testing out a few ideas on how they would work to see, does it really meet what we're trying to do? But what I understand that you'd like to see is some level of flexibility in what's going on on the interior of a building. But some protection of the neighborhood on impacts of those uses or just, you know, a level playing field so that everybody gets the same, same rules. And some effort or mechanism that protects when things move to compliance so that they don't go back. Those aren't necessarily all working in concert, if you know what I mean.
I mean, unless, you know, what, what I've been talking about is already addressed in terms of expansion. I mean, maybe that is enough to sort of forestall any of the expansion that we're talking, or, you know, moving to conformity within a structure. That, that, that it can't go back. Does that seem right to you?
Well, I mean, I, I think Mike's right that, that for the most part, we've addressed the issues except for the substitution provision where we're still a little uncertain if somebody wants to change a use, what uses we might allow within, within the terms of our ordinance.
Well, here's an example where it doesn't necessarily work the way you think it does. Office isn't a use listed in our ordinance. So an insurance office and a dental office may or may not be treated the same way in our ordinance. Retail and office are different uses. But do we really care if they're selling gift cards out of the basement? Or if they're, you know, providing massage therapy or, or whatever they're doing? You know, as, as long as the impact, as long as there's the same number of cars parked on the street, the noise level is the same, the building looks the same. I don't know that we really care what's going on on the interior of it. And if we do, then I don't know that we wanna even allow this concept of substitution. Maybe we just rely on the concept in a, in a less specific way and say, okay, well, it was being used for offices before. That's the non-conformity. We don't care whose office it is, as long as it's still being used as offices, it's the same non-conformity. But there isn't a substitution idea then. There's less flexibility.
Well, I think, you know, it goes both ways though is that, you know, I would like to see you have more clarity in terms of administering the ordinance, but I also would like to see property owners that have non-conforming uses have more clarity in what we're, we're requiring of them should they, should they want to change or do something different with their property in the future. So I think there's, you know, two, two perspectives here we're trying, trying to address.
Well, this doesn't have to be solved today. I'm happy to try and take another stab at this substitution concept based on the conversation we've had. And I'd love to receive more feedback if you think of it between now and next meeting. And we can go ahead and schedule a public hearing on this ordinance. You know, the public hearing isn't designed to rubber stamp a set of language you've already approved. It's really designed to get comments and so it's, it would be okay if we did that and then made further changes to things, that, that's the way it's supposed to work, so.
Well, the substitution is very vague.
I, 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 I agree, it doesn't, it doesn't provide the clarity that
No, nothing.
that, that I think Mike would like for administering the ordinance and it doesn't provide the clarity to the property owner to understand their future. I mean, I think this language that we have here could very well be looked at as, as narrowing the usage that might, that we might currently be allowing. I don't know that for certain, but it, it could be and
It's hard to say. Well, I can both try to improve option one by adding some definitions to some of those terms so that it's clear what we mean by similar or, or some of those things. And also try to improve option three. I think option three is a good compromise. It doesn't provide upfront clarity like you read it and understand it, but it provides clarity in the end in a way that's really hard to do in, in an ordinance, especially with all the unique circumstances involved.
And although it's messy, I, I like the idea of being able to, you know, work with our weirdness. You know, like, yeah, somebody wants to do something, we can all see that it's a good idea even though it's not actually a substitution, but it seems like, oh, this would be good.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you're looking at a conditional use process, just recognize that it, it's, it's a somewhat open process and the results are not so clearly defined because it's up to the decision makers that are in power at the time and how they perceive the, the ordinance and what the, I mean, there's generalities here in terms of what, what the, this would suggest how they, they review those and we know that the findings that we have to make are not always easy. You know, they can be somewhat ambiguous too. Well, let's, let's try this one more time. Let's, let's have you go back to the drawing board, see if you can come up with some additional language regarding substitution. Bring it back to our next meeting and at that time, if we're, we'll see where we're at and we can put this on a schedule for a public hearing in December and, you know.
I'm, I'm pretty confident that we'll have something workable for you at your next meeting. That, I mean, even if you have a public hearing then and you don't like it yet, you don't have to move it on, you still have time to think about it. But if you don't have a public hearing, then you can't move it on, so.
Right.
If we schedule it for next meeting, that gives you the opportunity to succeed otherwise.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, a conversation with the city attorney too would be
He's already, yeah, he's given me his comments, I haven't had a chance to look at him yet. But I'll be able to now kinda go through some specific scenarios with him and tease out some of this language, which would definitely be helpful.
So what we didn't do is talk about that last subdivision, subdivision six. I'm a little bit uncertain about, about that. Just because it's, it seems like it's a very process oriented provision and
Well, it looks a lot to me like nuisance language in our city code.
It does.
And what it would require is action by the city council that recognizes some sort of public health, safety, welfare situation. And it's an order, you know, it, it's leading us down a legal path, so.
Yes.
Is it necessarily, I mean, it, it's maybe a little redundant with some of the other controls we have in city code. I don't feel like we have a lot of them though, so.
Why don't you ask the city attorney about that, particularly or just subdivision, just, just to
Well, he sent it to me, I hope he likes it. Well, this is right out of one of the other cities' language too. I think it's Winona and I know Chris is their city attorney.
So how, how would they, they conduct a process to, to do this? And that, that's, I mean, it seems to me that you're starting to, it's pretty extensive process of documentation.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
And notifications and things to, to act on, on this. It's not, doesn't seem to be in our nature to, to do those kinds of things.
Not today. You know?
You're suggesting.
Forty-five years ago is when they wrote this original language. Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything else they wanna add?
Nope.
All right, so here we are. You'll work on, you'll work on bringing back some new language?
Yeah.
Or maybe some just clarifying language for the subdivision five substitution and
We're gonna do the public hearing on that other ordinance that you looked at at a previous meeting next time too, so I'm already advertising it. It's just easy to put two things on the list.
So we will do this at our November meeting, have a public hearing on the proposed ordinance. With them recognizing the, the changes we made to this language and whatever language, language changes Mike makes to that substitution provision. So November, we'll have a public, public hearing, November second.
Everybody planning on being here?
Clear my calendar. Hearing no other business, we are adjourned.